Good evening, West Orange. Welcome. This is meeting number twenty five. Today is November eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, and this is our public meeting for the Town Council of West Orange. My name is Tammy Williams. I'm your Town Council President, Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section Five of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter Two Thirty-One, Public Law nineteen seventy-five. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and West Orange Chronicle on November second, two thousand and twenty-three. Councilwoman Castellino?
Uh, Councilwoman Castellino, can you hear us?
Yeah.
So, yes.
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes. Councilwoman Gabor Michael?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Present.
Council President Williams?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the pleasure of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
We'll now open the meeting for public comment. Is there anyone in council chambers that would like to speak to public comment? And public comment this evening, uh, before we start the meeting is going to be on the items on the agenda. If you would like to have public comment regarding any additional items, will we open public comment, um, at the end of the business items?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is clearly, oh.
So, don't forget, yes, thank you.
Ten Burnett Terrace. Clearly, this is, uh, with reference to two items. One is to confirm the audit, and the other is to, uh, address a resolution for funding of retirement payments to various employees. My first question is where are the calculations that arrive at the payment amounts to be paid to the, the employees or former employees? All, all that's shown on the list is lump sum amounts. And related to that is, it seems like these people have retired some time ago. Why, you know, why weren't those, those retire, uh, retirement pension? Question for the township is, when of an employee retires, when are, when is the retirement payments funded and, and is it funded for their whole retirement period or anticipated using actuarial calculations? Or is it an ongoing funding? So that's a question that, uh, I don't know the answer to, and ask those who do. Other question has to do with, uh, why the township is allowing employees to continue to accrue vacation and sick time. You know, without any limitation whatsoever, when the state of New Jersey in two thousand and ten elected to change its law to limit and put caps on how much an employee can carry over. I mean, the science behind such a thing is vacation time is intended for people to take a break from work to be able to, uh, refresh themselves so that they can then come back to work and operate efficiently. When people do nothing but work, efficiency goes into the toilet, let's be frank. It's, it's not designed to be a profit center for people. It's supposed to be, you take it, and that's, that's how corporations in this country have been operating for decades, frankly, as long as I've worked. Um, I've never been able to carry over more than maybe a week to ten days of vacation time, never for sick time. So, given the financial circumstances that this town finds itself in, this should have been addressed back in two thousand and ten. The action plan required by the audits that have been conducted of this town have not been presented, uh, which means that the town is in, in, not in compliance with the state law. So, all of the rationale that I've provided means that this council should be obligated to reject both of these resolutions that's in front of you today. And that's, that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else in council chambers? Mr. Fagan, anyone on the Zoom audience for a public comment?
Uh, any member of the Zoom audience wishing to address Town Council, please raise your hand. Council President seeing none.
Okay, thank you. Public comment.
I'm sorry. A hand just came up, but I think it's a, uh, professional who's going to comment on the, uh, on the budget.
Okay, great. Thank you. Public comment is, um, closed except to our professionals, and we do have, uh, members of the Audit Committee, um, at the ready if there are any questions. Do my colleagues have any questions? All right. Um, responses to?
I do, I do have a question.
Yes, certainly.
Um, I spent the weekend reading the audit, and, um, in the general, and in the general comments, under the paragraph, "New Jersey Comptroller's Report on Sick and Vacation Leave Policies", it states, "On July seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, the Office of the New Jersey Comptroller issued a report titled 'A Review of Sick and Vacation Leave Policies in New Jersey Municipalities', in which the Comptroller reviewed the sick and vacation leave policies of sixty municipalities against laws enacted in the New Jersey State Legislature in two thousand and seven and two thousand and ten. The results of the report found that numerous policies of the municipalities reviewed were considered as non-compliant by the Comptroller and the applicable laws. The impact of the two thousand and seven and two thousand and ten laws regarding leave policies and how they are incorporated and implemented into collective bargaining agreements, individual contracts, and municipal codes can be complicated and difficult to implement. The township was included as part of the Comptroller's review, which noted three instances of potential non-compliance. We suggest that the township review its current policies and practices with its municipal labor attorney to ensure compliance with the applicable New Jersey state statutes. So my questions are, what are those three instances? And why was this not made as a recommendation in the recommendation section? I believe there were no recommendations. Um, so I would just like someone to explain that.
So, is the auditor on, and, okay, um, so, I'm sorry, the name of our auditor?
Uh, Mr. Bronco.
Yes, hi.
Hi, how are you? Good, yes, we can.
Um, I'm Anthony Bronco from PKF O'Connor Davies. Um, I was asked to, uh, join tonight's meeting in case there were some, some questions concerning the audit. Um, just in regards to the, um, section that you decided, um, I would be able to provide those three instances so that we can discuss that in further detail. That, that will just have to pull up the, the report. I don't have that handy with me now. If I had known that, uh, this would be coming up, I would have been prepared, so I apologize for that.
I have them in front of me if you'd like.
Okay.
The first one is, um, I'll read the preceding paragraph for context in preparing these draft findings. "We have evaluated the township's response to the survey and any additional documents provided by the township. We also may have reviewed publicly available documents, including municipal ordinances and union contracts available from the New Jersey Public Employment Relations Commission's website. OSC finds as follows. Number one, West Orange has not complied with the two thousand and seven law NJSA eleven A colon six hyphen nineteen dot one. Its employee manual allows payment for accrued sick leave at a time other than at retirement for covered employees. Number two, West Orange has not complied with the twenty-ten law NJSA eleven A colon six hyphen nineteen dot two. Its employee manual allows payment for accrued sick leave at a time other than at retirement for non-union employees hired after May twenty-one, two thousand and ten. Number three, West Orange is not in compliance with the twenty-ten law, same law, with regard to sick time payout because it allows for payout at a time other than at retirement and does not cap the payout at fifteen thousand dollars for employees hired after May eleventh, two thousand and ten, and its PBA, Police SOA, FMBA, and FMBA SOA contracts. There's a fourth here where it says we are in compliance, uh, West Orange is in compliance with NJSA eleven A colon six hyphen three E with regard to vacation accrual. So the three issues are with regard to, um, sick time for, uh, covered, all covered employees, non-union employees hired after May twenty-one, two thousand and ten, and no cap, um, consistent with the state law, which would be at fifteen thousand dollars for employees hired after May eleventh, two thousand and ten."
And I have a further question.
Can we let him answer that question, please, before you continue? Thank you.
And, and the question, just so that we're, uh, as I understand it, is how do we have an audit? And I didn't think that's how we were going to do it. We just had public comment, so I thought we would respond to public comment and then go to the resolutions. Um, but the question is, how is it the audit doesn't highlight those as deficiencies when the state has already highlighted it as a deficiency? And our CFO, in his response to the state, acknowledges that we have not updated our policies or our manuals?
Right, well, I should, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just want to add before you go, in the preceding paragraph under corrective action plan, it says, "In accordance with the regulations promulgated by the Division of Local Government Services, all municipalities are required to prepare and submit to the Division of Local Government Services a corrective action plan with regard to audit deficiencies. This plan must be approved by formal resolution of the governing body and submitted within sixty days from the date the audit is received. There were no findings in the prior year, but for this year, uh, my question is, shouldn't there be a resolution to remedy this situation?
Uh, it, it, there, there doesn't have to be one, no. So, we, we cited in the audit report that this, that this was something that came up in a report that happened during the fiscal year under audit. We didn't include it as a finding because it warranted further investigation by the Township Council. Uh, council meaning, um, legal council. As far as your corrective action plan, this wouldn't have to be included, being that there technically wasn't a, a finding, but there was a citation in the audit of such a report. It's not like we didn't disclose it. It's disclosed there. So, uh, in regards to whether or not it should have been a finding, without further investigation, we wouldn't be able to comment specifically in what the recommendations are and, and, um, that, that was the position on it, but it wasn't that we remained silent on the fi, on the report that was out there. Um, so that was our position on it.
Council President, if I may, uh, and I, I think this is different than what I thought we were going to do tonight with regard to the audit. What we're doing is just certifying that we read the parts that we needed to read. Uh, but, um, Mr. Anthony, I, I forgive me, I did not get your last name. I apologize.
Uh, Bronco, sir.
Branco?
Yeah.
Bronco?
B-R-A-N-C-O.
Bronco, got it. Um, when was the request for, um, le, uh, an investigation by legal made? And how was that made? Was it made via email or was that a verbal request, uh, for a legal department to review, um, these three issues and then let, and then I guess respond back to you? Uh, when, when was that request made?
The request was made during the audit, um, specifically, well, the, the, the audit was filed in September. You figure it's, I, I couldn't tell you a precise moment. It was a verbal conversation that was had there with, with Township Management, and, uh, was something that was being investigated.
And have you received any follow-up from anyone in the administration regarding that request?
No, sir, not as of yet.
And, um, I, I hate to just.
No, go ahead, go ahead. It was supposed to be through our labor attorney.
Yeah.
This was supposed to be investigated by our municipal labor attorney, whoever that may be.
So, um, it, just so that I'm clear, an issue was highlighted, it was raised to the administration, and request, uh, for a classification or an investigation was made. No response was given. By the time the audit was concluded and you still thought it was appropriate not to include at least that the question was raised in the audit report? Like, wouldn't you still at least raise in the audit that there's a potential issue here? The state has cited three instances. We need some further clarification?
That's a good point.
So I, so I guess the, 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 uh, well, I mean, the wording that we, we have in there is what we, we felt was appropriate in the circumstances, is what I would say.
Any further questions?
That's it for me right now, at least.
So, um, there was some additional questions, and then just in response to, I didn't know this was going to be the process. Um, I was advised, just like you are, that he was available for questions, so I, I mean, I'm just, it's.
It's all right. I mean, we're here, so let's, you know.
So, there were some additional questions, uh, Mr. Bronco, if you could answer them. There was some inquiry, um, from Mr. DeVoe about the calculation amounts. How are they tallied? Are you able to answer any of that information?
As far as how they were tallied, no, not at the moment. I wouldn't be able to tally it. I would have to, uh,
I would have to investigate that and research it and provide a response formal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, he needs to be here.
I can answer some of that, it's like.
Well, can we, just, uh, if Council President, if I may, just for sake of clarity, can we take one issue at a time? I know you know that other issue well, but, um, since we're on the audit, can we finish with the audit?
But is, are there any questions, additional questions regarding the audit?
I, I have one.
Okay, certainly.
That tripped me out.
Go ahead. Councilwoman?
Sorry, sorry about that, guys. Um, yeah, so I guess mine is for Mr. Smeraldo in, in regards to, do you have any information about this particular matter that my colleagues just referenced? Because I know when I had asked Mr. Gross about this two thousand and seven, two thousand and ten catch-up with the law, his answer to me was it's going to be taken care of in the next, you have to, uh, with the next negotiated contract with this, this coming year. So, was there any mention, like, do you have any information for us? Like, is this, um, something that's going to be, uh, uh, so resolved, uh, within the next contract? Are they looking to do that or that they acknowledge it? Like, because this is the first I'm hearing that the auditor, uh, had questioned it.
So, I'm not directly involved with the audit in my roles. That's more in the finance area. Um, as far as the comments and things of that nature, that's going to be a negotiated item, uh, because there are negotiated items, especially with the, uh, the, the public safety. So if that has to be addressed, it would be done, done in the next contract negotiations, if that's what the town wishes to do and, and the, and the contracts themselves. But regarding the audit comments, I, I can't provide you an answer because I'm not directly involved with it. Now, we can, Stephanie's, uh, maybe Stephanie can answer the question, uh, regarding.
Ms. Santana, are you on the call?
All right, so while we're waiting for her to come on, I have a question. Why are we having this meeting if Mr. Gross isn't here?
Yeah.
Council President, in the last meeting, you tabled everything because you said that Mr. Gross wasn't there, and I hear he's on vacation, which is great, good for him. Everyone deserves a vacation. But why are we having this meeting today? If he's not here, Stephanie should have been in here. Thank God she's, you know, hopefully on the Zoom. Yes, but like, Mr. Smeraldo can't answer the finance question. Why are we having this meeting? Why don't?
He should be directly answering these questions.
I, I don't understand at all. Just doesn't make sense.
This makes no sense.
Waste of everyone's time to come here if Mr. Gross isn't here.
So, how did we get here for today? How, how was this meeting scheduled?
We asked for everyone's availability. We gave our availability. No one in the messages said that John Gross was on vacation or not able to be here.
Well, I, I, I recall.
That's just exactly what it is, though. Yeah, no, it is that we're signing.
So, Mr., Mr. Fagan, are we back on Zoom? Or do we have members back on the Zoom audience?
There's supposed to be a resolution for it.
But that's a different, that's still a different councilwoman. That's still a different item.
We can.
We have to ask for that res.
And we can do that in the business tonight.
We can. Okay, so I'm going to call the meeting back to order.
Councilwoman Castellino, can you hear us?
Hey, did you get back on now?
I can.
Okay, great. Thank you.
It appears we're back on, but I don't know how long we're off for.
Okay, not a problem. Okay, so thank you for calling the meeting back to order.
Santana's going to be trying to get back in, Joe.
All right.
Sorry, Ms. Santana, just look for her, please.
Um, just wanted to clarify again, and I'll ask, uh, Councilman Rutherford to just restate, um, the purpose of the certification for this resolution this evening. He articulated that quite well.
Uh, so, for the record, my understanding is our vote with regard to the audit does not certify the audit. It does not say that we accept the findings of the audit. It does not pass judgment on the audit in any way, shape, or form. Our vote tonight, uh, with regard to the audit only states that we read the part of the audit that the state requires us to read. It says that we, by signing our name, we're saying we read what the state wants us to read, and that's it. It doesn't mean that we agree or disagree, like or dislike, approve or disapprove of any part of the audit. It's just saying we read the part the state requires us to read.
Thank you, Councilman.
That is correct, yeah.
The, the resolution does state that, yes.
Paragraph four and five.
At this time, I'm going to move for the acceptance of third, three sixty-six dash twenty-three. The resolution authorizing the certification of the two thousand and twenty-two annual audit by the governing body. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Castellino?
Councilwoman Castellino, Council, Councilwoman Gabor Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes, thank you. Ordinance is on first reading. Ordinance number twenty-eight, twenty-five dash twenty-three. Ordinance of the Township of West Orange and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, providing for a special emergency appropriation in an amount not to exceed one point five million dollars to fund contractually required severance liabilities resulting from the retirement of employees in the township. Um, so the question that was asked again was how the retirement payments are calculated, um, how those tallies are made, uh, when are the payments funded? Um, there was a question regarding some of the names being on the previous list from the previous year, and they're still on the list for this year. Can we get an explanation as to how that?
Sure.
Occurs?
So, regarding the calculation sick time, I would defer to Mrs. Santana because there, there is a fifteen thousand dollar minimal, uh, where amount of sick time that caps out of fifteen thousand based on the employee's salary. And then I, I believe it's twenty percent after that, well, twenty cents on every dollar, but I'll defer her to, um, to confirm that. But according to contractual obligations, the employees accumulate time, um, uh, over the years, whether it be sick time, vacation time, personal days, or, uh, use it or lose it. And there's also the compensatory Fair Labor Standard at compensatory time, which you're allowed to carry up to four hundred and eighty hours. And that is, it could be, um, accumulated on yesterday's dollar and paid out on tomorrow's, depending on how long the FLSA, the comp time, um, accumulates on the, on the books. So when an employee, uh, after a certain amount of time, they accumulate, um, up to no more than two years of vacation time, which is by, we're, we're not supposed to carry more than two years. That's for employees, I believe it was two thousand and ten, and it may be a little bit later. Um, there are other employees that now, if they've been hired after, I believe it's two thousand and fifteen, they're only allowed to carry, they're, you have to use it or lose it. If you don't, if you don't use it this year, you lose it, so that doesn't accumulate. So there are some stopgaps already in place. But, uh, if the amount of, of time is on the books, it is accumulated through the years, and as their salary increases, so do their days that the value of the day is. So at the time that they retire, that's what it's paid out as. We have caps on the amount of comp time, which is four hundred and eighty hours. That's federal law. We have caps on the amount of sick time that, uh, I'm sorry, uh, vacation time, which is up to two years, depending on the employee. And then we have also the, this, the sick time. The sick time in itself accumulates, just continues to accumulate. If, if an employee is a dedicated employee and never calls out sick after twenty-five years and has fifteen days a year, they're going to accumulate that many days. Um, and then, then it gets paid out based on the formula that I mentioned earlier, whatever the exact formula is. So that's how sometimes these, these, um, amounts that you see are here. And it also depends on their, their rank, their position, their title, and, and, uh, the job that they perform. So it's based on, that's what their salary is appropriate to that particular position. What tonight's resolution is based on is that these are all the employees that have retired this year, and some have prior, have retired prior years who have elected to, uh, take their pay, payouts over several years, so that this way it's not one lump sum, which has been permitted. And again, I would defer to Stephanie, but I believe it's up to no more than five years. And I believe that's been just recently passed to, enacted by the state of New Jersey. And, but most, every, every employee that's on the list that's here for tonight, with the exception of two, who are retiring as of December first, have already been paid out this year. So this resolution is basically to secure the bonding and the money to help pay for what we've already paid. Um, if, if we choose not to introduce it tonight and put it out for first reading, all it's saying is that this money's not, it's going to be, we're going to have to pay it forward. This money's been paid out. We need to bond and, 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 and pay it, or we have to pay it next year, which could cost us another two percent or so, so.
My question is, why didn't it come up in this budget season? We just passed the budget in September.
What happens every year is we don't know when employees are going to retire. We don't tell people when they retire. We anticipate every year, since I've been, since I was a firefighter way back in the day, every year they ask, "Do you plan on retiring next year?" We say yes or no. Those who are eligible typically say yes, because then this way, if they do decide to go, that we will anticipate this money is going to be paid out at some point during the year. The town has traditionally always bonded this money at the end of the year to, to, to know exactly what we've actually paid out. So, but if an employee says, "Okay, I've been here twenty-seven years. I have X amount of hours, X amount of time, and I decided to retire." Next, I'm going to retire next year. Wait, the, so I just want to answer real quick. So they, they put in for next year. We, so that the town calculates how much they anticipate it to be, and then they will, they will make sure they have to consider it. That's how we.
I hear you, but again, this happened prior to the September, so why wouldn't we, why didn't this come up by John Gross for us to budget for it in the budget?
As I said.
All retire in September or June or July or May? I mean.
As I explained before, the, the, the tradition, and I, I will defer to Stephanie because this is, you know, I'm not the finance person, but every year in our budget, this is what we do. We pay, and then we, we pay at the end because we don't know what the amount is. So we, if, if, from my understanding, is if we say there's going to be one point seven, you bond in the beginning of the year, one point seven, and we don't pay out the one point seven, now you've bonded for one point seven.
But these people already retired, so.
Right, right.
Should have done, talked about this over the summer.
But not everybody had, not everybody had. This is, it, this is the, this is the procedure. I'm explaining you the procedures as to whether, whether you agree with it's right or wrong or indifferent. These are the procedures that have been done through the years through, with the financing of our.
It's clearly not working.
I think there's insufficient information.
It would be nice to know when they retired, when they said they're, uh, just.
And who, anybody on here retired after the twenty-ten, twenty-fifteen, when this fifteen thousand cap went into place?
Uh, everybody here is, was hired prior to that time. Well, well, I shouldn't say everybody. There are, so the majority of the people on this list met their obligations of retirement through the, their, their respective pensions. There are some people here that left for various different reasons without getting into personnel matters, and they're just no longer an employee of the township. Um, but the majority, especially the ones that are a little bit larger, and some are the ones who have met their, you know, their. you know, their obligations for, for the conditions of the, of the pension.
Have you reached out to the state? Are, are we allowed to pay these amounts? I mean, have they been approved? Has, has anyone reached out? Because we've been out of compliance.
I, I can answer, I cannot answer that question for you.
Ms. Santana, are you on the line?
Ms. Santana, can you hear us?
So, uh, Ms. G, Councilwoman Gepremichael just asked a question as to whether or not the payout amounts have been approved by the state. Is that a process? Is that a process that is required?
Um, it's a process, um, during the budget season when we submit our budget. So it'll be next year.
So these payouts don't have to be approved until two thousand twenty-four for?
Yep. So right now we are doing the budget, we're doing the resolution for right now. Uh, we don't submit anything to the state.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I, I didn't understand that.
The only time that we submit resolutions to the state is when we're, we're going into adopting the budget. We're going to insert these, um, resolutions, these bond ordinance in our budget and in our annual financial statements, which is due on February tenth, saturatorily, and also in the budget is due, uh, in the fir, in the first quarter. That's when we insert this, this information on there, if that makes sense.
Yes, thank you. So just, uh, appreciate you clarifying the process. So it, it doesn't appear that we're out of compliance with anything based on what Ms. Santana just indicated, um, that it's required to be submitted in the budget for two thousand twenty-four in February.
Yeah, the only time we would submit it is if, um, if we have new debt, we have to do a supplemental debt statement. And that, that is due every time we have new, new issuances. Other than that, that's, that's the only time we, we let the state know.
Thank you. And so Councilwoman Scarpas' question, uh, just indicating that she needed additional information, uh, retirement dates, I understand that that won't be available and certainly, uh, may not be public information. Um, but can you make that information available to her if she contacts you directly so that she can have her, uh, questions answered as well?
Yes.
Okay, so again, to that point, guys, this, at, at the meeting, it's very difficult for them to answer in real time. So the questions that you were asking about the retirees, we got this list last week. So additional information could have very easily just been emailed or called or questioned. Again, whether Mr. Gross is here or not, he may not have access to those records at the meeting time. Councilwoman.
Um, Ms. Santana, just to follow up on, just a clarification. So we, we are, so you're, you would expect to include this information in the budget, which is due in the first quarter of next year. Did I understand that correctly?
Yes.
All right, so if we had done our budget on time this year, would we have included these numbers or would we have included two thousand twenty-two numbers?
Twenty-twenty-two, we don't know who's retiring, um, in the beginning of the year. Um, some of these people on this list retired in the summer, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't know.
Okay, and then, um, I have a few other questions. Um, so one, these amounts are the total amounts that are going to be broken up over a period of years, not the amount per year.
Correct, yes.
All right, and so these employees have already agreed to accept these payments over several years.
Correct.
And we've at least made one initial payment on that several, several year, um, you know, timeframe.
Yes, yes.
All right, so this is no longer a question for you, but I do have more questions for you. So my, my, my concern here, uh, Mr. Smoraldo, my colleagues here, um, when we discuss this in council meetings and outside of council meetings, Mr. Gross has, um, spoken about this as if we have two choices. We either bond the amount that we need to pay these guys, so that we can pay it over a period of time, or we have to pay it as a lump sum. That is different than what I'm hearing tonight. What I'm hearing tonight is the employee makes an election, and then they'll get paid, or if they choose to take it over time, they're gonna get paid over time, whether we bond it or not. If we don't bond it, we're just responsible in that current year for that current year's payment. We don't have to bond out to pay all five years. Am I, is something going past me? And, and very well may be.
I wanna make sure I'm saying this correctly, because some, some employees elect to spread it out. They have deferred compensation, things of that nature, that they can possibly, you know, have as, um, as a, as a, um, elective to do, um, with, with their monies. Um, some employees just want a lump sum, depending on the, the amount, you know, and, and, and as you can see by the difference amounts, it's, some people may say, just give me the whole thing, because it's not a, a great amount, and some say, hey, I'd rather spread it out for tax purposes. That's, that's an individual's, um, uh, selection, that their choice to do. So, um, but if an employee says, I would like to have a lump sum, then we, we pay them that lump sum. So it's, it is an election, uh, elective, election on there, um, to, to do that. But, um, it can possibly be spread out, and then we'd have to adjust for that each year as, as they move forward.
So in addition to the information that's already been requested, and, and, you know, I'll follow it up with an email if I must. Um, but I'd like to know which of these are spread out and which of these are lump sum. The, the difficulty with regard to that particular issue is we don't know how much has to be spent per year. And obviously, this is a rolling thing, right? So there's a group that retired last year, there's a group that retired five, four years ago, three years ago, two years ago, that we still have some payments for. So it would be helpful to us to, as we understand what our obligations are and why it's smart or not smart to pursue this particular course of action, bond out a million five. It would be helpful to us to know what the impact is of this current group that actually has retired, and how that is going to affect the annual payments we have to make for everybody that's receiving annual payments. Uh, obviously, some people took a lump sum payout. We don't have to pay them anymore. But for those that are still receiving annual payments, it would be helpful for us to know what that total number is. So in addition to the information that's already been requested, um, I'd like to know which of these are lump sum and which are spread out over the course of time, as well as what our current annual, um, payments are going to be for the folks that have already retired and are in that particular payment program.
If the, if the payments are being spaced out over time, you wanna know exactly how much those payments are and how much time is left?
Yeah, so what I'd like, I don't need to know, and, and for people that have already retired and are already, and I don't need names. I just need the total number that the township is obligated to pay for that program. There are ten people that retired last year that are receiving, uh, payments over time. There are fifteen the year before, or whatever. Just wanna know what the total number is so we can understand what the fiscal impact is.
Thank you. Are there any other questions regarding?
Have a couple. I wanted to clarify one thing Mr. Smoraldo said earlier, and I think it's important for those that don't, um, that are watching or may watch. Um, you said it's accumulated on yesterday's dollar, but it's paid on tomorrow's. And, and you did further, you followed up later on with a little clarification, basically saying, if I start twenty years ago and my compensation is fifty thousand dollars a year, and it works out to whatever that is per day, and I have ten days, um, of comp time. And I'm not talking about sick or vacation, just comp time. I, or I got five days of comp time. And it's accumulated twenty years ago, and I'm making fifty thousand dollars, and then twenty years later, I'm making a hundred and fifty thousand. When I take it, I'm getting paid at that hundred and fifty thousand rate.
Correct. That's correct.
So my question is, is that something we've agreed to in, in the contracts? Is that, is that something that, uh, is a, a part of some guideline or state regulation?
Well, when it comes to compensatory time, it's federal law.
Yeah.
It's, federal law is federal law, so, uh, the, 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 we've through the years, particularly the police, the fire department, comp time is a very, very, uh, we could spend three meetings on it, but we can compel an employee to take time. The problem is, if I compel you to take time today in a posi, when we have a position for position type, um, environment such as the police and fire, you take, or I compel you to take ten hours. I need somebody to fill that position. They're gonna come in and take that position for ten and, for fifteen hours of comp time. So Councilwoman takes fifteen hours of comp time. She takes up. Councilwoman fills in. She's gonna get time and a half of fifteen hours, twenty-two and a half hours of comp. It's a perpetual. So, so what we like to do is tell the employees, we, we encourage the employees to take their comp time. Um, we ask them to take their time. We have a very strict policy, both in the police and the fire department, and, and the other departments too. But they're the primary, um, uh, components that use this. And, but it's hard to compel somebody to do, because when we have minimal staffings and minimal, or, or special events, or things of that nature, where we require a police officer or firefighter be at, it become, it's a, it's a way of, of compensating our employee without actually paying actual cash dollars in overtime. Um, we could pay them in cash, but then it be, it also affects our, our operating costs. So, and every year, and every year, I remember, I could tell you, but when I would prepare the budgets for the fire department, and I know the police chief does the same thing, we have to provide the amount of compensatory hours that have been, um, um, awarded or, or, you know, provided throughout the year because, um, it, it's money, and we have to account for it. And it gets cal, it gets calculated toward the budget.
No, I understand. I, I wanted, uh, what I was getting at was, you know, we're about to go into contract negotiations. If it's something that is a, is in, because some of these numbers, this is a partial list. This is the folks that have retired uh, this year, or ex, or are expected to retire by December thirty-first, right, or whatever date in December. Um, there are others that we are aware of, um, that are in, that are eligible to retire, and these numbers can get quite large. And so my, my question is, is that an item that is up for negotiation? Or is it something that we're just obligated to do?
Sick, sick time and vacation time personally are negotiated items.
That's good enough for me. All right, and I think that's my last question on that, at, at least for right now. Thank you.
All right, so, uh, we comfortable moving this, um, on first reading? We don't have to take a vote, but if we are comfortable moving it to first reading, um.
I'm not, Council President, I'm not comfortable with this, the first reading, without the information.
Yeah.
So Count, uh, can I make a statement? My hands up.
Yes, absolutely. Please, Councilwoman.
Yeah, thank you. So, um, this isn't our first time. I mean, we, this has been the practice, um, that we, what, um, that we have been, uh, funding this the past few years. And, um, maybe Ms. Santana could enlighten us on how much it was the year before and the year before that, when, um, three of us had approved this in years past. Um, but just, just a statement from Mr. DeBowie, and, and just understanding public employees and working with public employees, uh, for the past twenty years, even going back to my school board days. Um, a lot of these items way back when, when these, um, I guess you, you know, the people in the private sector, such as myself, you know, you know, these are like perks. And, um, way back when, um, folks, um, started a lot less on the salary guides. And so, so this was something to attract, um, public employees, um, with the sick days and whatnot. And, you know, the state, um, that, you know, started doing away with that. So most of these, uh, staff members have been with us for, for many years, and you could see that on the list. Um, same thing, and to help my colleague, Ms. Scarpas, uh, Councilwoman Scarpas along, kind of like at the school district where you, with the sick time, um, if someone's out, you give your days to somebody else. And, because you have that bank, the, 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 the bank, and I know at the school district, they negotiated some, some of that through the years. So yeah, this would be something that, um, could, to a certain degree, be negotiated for the next contract. But a lot of it, I think, uh, for the employees that are existing and on these lists are, uh, fall in the federal guidelines. So I just wanna be mindful of that. I know this is time sensitive, because if this bond doesn't get posted, um, we, it's, you know, we risk, um, we, we risk it going out at a later date and a different rate. And that's, you know, that's all I wanna state on that.
Councilman?
Yeah, so, um, that was actually, uh, one of the thoughts I had too. Based on what the information we received tonight, um, I'm not as, uh, convinced that we have to go out right now if, I mean, I don't know what the breakdown is. Uh, but I don't know that we have to go into the bond market right now if we're making, if we've already made a payment this year for, you know, the folks that are in this, uh, category, and we're obligated to make a payment next year. I mean, we're bonding out five years worth of payments? I don't, I, that's.
Council, just clarify. I'm not saying we're gonna bond out five years, and I, I, I refer to Ms. Santana, but I, what I'm saying to you is that the, the employee has the option to. We, I don't, I cannot tell you what the employees have done here. So I don't wanna, you know, misnomer that, that, that they actually, every one of these are getting paid over five years. Some may have. I don't have that breakdown. I, like. We'll get that for you. I, I would suggest, further suggest, say, say that I did speak to Mr. Gross. He says he will have those numbers for you. Uh, we do only have three meetings left in this year. So even if you decide to put up for first reading, and whether you pass it next meeting or the following meeting, you know, at least you have the ability to, to say yes or no. And it gives us the ability as a municipality to say, maybe we'll bond it for this year, because if we don't, and we put it out for next year, it will definitely cost us at least a two percent more to follow you to pay it out. I'm just food for thought and just, just.
No, I get it.
And I'm not the, I'm not the financial person, but I've just, just given, you know, trying to put some common sense to, to see if we can at least put it on the table, and then you do whatever, whether you want.
So I, I'm comfortable introducing it on first reading. Um, we don't have to pass it, and we can certainly get additional information before we have it on second reading. I certainly do not want us to be in a situation where if we do have to go to the bond market, based on additional information, it's at the very end of the year when rates are not as favorable. Um, so I'm gonna move to introduce on first reading.
Well, be, before I just had. Before we did that, I, I wasn't done with my questions.
You can certainly.
Um, I had a clar, question of clarification on, on how the law actually works. So two thousand seven, there were changes made, and two thousand ten, there were changes made. My assumption is, and, and this is really the question, folks that were working prior to that, whatever they had accumulated prior to the change in the law, they got to keep, right? They were grandfathered in, they, 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 they did not lose it because the law changed, because that was the law when it was accumulated. Is that right?
I believe so, but I haven't read the law. It's two thousand seven to ten, uh, you know, I, I, I don't wanna say yet. Yes, there was changes and recommendations made. However, we did have contracts at the time that also we had to abide by.
We need to get.
Can Ms. Santana a, answer that question for us?
No, I, I, I would have to turn that to our, our law department, honestly.
Okay, all right, so that, that's, that's something I'd like to, to know.
We could look for that. I, I, I don't wanna give you an answer that I, I'm not comfortable providing you the wrong information.
All right, and then the last thing I wanted to say before we actually took the vote. This is, um, raised some concern amongst township employees that are nearing retirement, that we've made some commitments to them, and that there is a potential or possibility that those commitments could be altered. Uh, so I want the public employees that are present or, or watching, or will watch down the road to know. Um, and while I cannot speak for my council colleagues, I can speak to the actions we've taken as a council. Uh, and all five of us have expressed our support for our township employees. We recognize we're in a contract year. Um, and so we are not trying to go through this exercise to shortchange or to reneg on a commitment, um, that we made to our employees. Um, there, there are some questions that we have to answer in order to move forward. We are dealing with tax, tax dollars. Uh, but please don't misconstrue what we're going through tonight um, to be, um, to lack support for public employees in any department in town hall. Um, I think, um, that would be the last thing we'd wanna do. Uh, none of us are looking to shortchange you, make you work harder, or do, or continue this concept of do more with less. We know there's no less to do more with. Um, so please don't make that assumption that there's something here. Uh, something that we're gonna do here is going to go back on what we've committed to our employees. All right, that's the last thing I think I have to say before the vote.
Madam Clark.
So we do the motion in a second, um, to introduce on first reading, uh, Councilwoman Castelino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gepremichael.
No.
Councilman Rutherford.
I am a yes, and I will be a no if I don't get all my information beforehand. And I'm just saying that now, whether I follow up or not, if I don't have all the information to vote, I'm a no.
Thank you. Councilwoman Scarpas?
No.
Council President Williams? Yes. Uh, the motion carries, and is there, we don't have listed, uh, new business? Is there, I, and just discussion, is there?
We do. I think it's imperative that we, um.
Susan, can you speak?
Yeah, I think it's imperative that we get in compliance with this. comment that should have been a recommendation in our audit. That the township review its current policies and procedures with its municipal label inter- attorney to ensure compliance with the applicable New Jersey state law. And my understanding from the previous paragraph is that has to be done through resolution. Previous paragraph, which says corrective action plan, says in accordance with regulations promulgated by the Division of Local Government Services, all municipalities are required to prepare and submit to the Division of Local Government Services a corrective plan with regard to audit deficiencies. This plan must be approved by formal resolution of the governing body and submitted within sixty days from the date the audit is received.
And that would have been done if there were, yeah, but there wasn't. So that's why it was never done.
There was no corrective action indicated.
I think that needs to be done because this, even though it wasn't called a corrective action, I believe it is. It was put under general comments, but it's a corrective action is the way I see it.
Thank you.
I don't, it's a legal question. I don't, I don't know.
It may, it is a legal question. I, but we, Mr. Gross sent forwarded to us uh, the emails back and forth dealing with this thing, which is part of the reason why we're taking this kind of position. It, we, we understand that our policies and contracts have not been amended to reflect the law. And if they're not, then we have no real mechanism for knowing whether we're in compliance or not. Um, so we do need to go through some process to update our policies and procedures. Now, I'm sure because it's getting some attention now and we're in contracts this year, it'll be added to the contracts. Um, but the language needs to be somewhere so that future council people who don't have the benefit of this conversation have something to refer to, to know whether or not we are actually in compliance if for some reason it's not mentioned in the audit as it was this year. And by the way, this is something, sounds like this is something that should have been mentioned in the audit last year too, and it wasn't.
So our contract negotiations, especially for police and fire, were done three years ago. And then there was an extension.
I believe it was um extended from twenty three, twenty two, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It was extended from twenty two into twenty three, and I believe it was a three-year contract prior to.
Correct.
It's a total of four years.
Right. So I just wanted to put on the record that at the time that those were, those changes and corrections were noted. It was prior to the previous contract negotiation process. I think that's why Mr. Gross certainly will confirm that. Keep saying that it'll be a direct date, uh, it will be adjusted in in this negotiation process.
Uh, with all due respect, Council President, President, I I don't disagree with that at all. I think that is just a part of it. Part of it is our manuals, policies, and that part could have been updated townwide. Um, going back to twenty one, at least from the emails that I've been reading.
Good. Thank you. Is anything else?
Excuse me, Council President?
Yes.
So but but so didn't the accountant just said he just made this acknowledgement this this past September of twenty twenty three? I'm a little confused. Yeah, that that, that, yeah, that's what I heard. So I'm sorry, Councilman. I'm just where, what was cited in twenty twenty one? If you could forward me that email, I I must, I'm missing something because I heard the accountant say um, it was twenty twenty three when they cited this. And which makes sense that it would go to this coming negotiation as opposed to the past negotiation.
Um, yeah, Council, uh, Councilwoman Castellino. So the emails that Mr. Gross sent to us uh go back to uh, February of twenty twenty two, and they referenced the twenty twenty one findings. So while the auditor is now talking about uh elevating this issue this year, it is something the township has known at least since February of twenty twenty two.
Yeah.
Um, and likely in twenty twenty one as well because it's referenced where the discrepancies were in twenty twenty one, in the twenty twenty one survey.
All right. Thank you, everyone. And we'll um certainly look to have responses uh from Mr. Gross upon his return. And I'll make sure that that's communicated in writing, as well as the administration has already taken notes up. Um, watched you guys do. So is there a second to the adjournment?
No, wait.
Okay.
I have something too.
Okay. Um, ABC hearing, we need to schedule.
I sent you my date.
Yeah, I can send you mine, sorry.
Um, but can we talk about it while we're all together?
Sure.
That we can kind of look at calendars and stuff.
Um, was there a a time that it needs to be heard by?
No, but um they said the sooner the better.
All right.
Because there are many issues with this particular establishment and the neighbors are separating.
Um, okay, so we have our next meeting coming up on the twentieth.
Did, did, what what I'm hearing though is that this, you want a separate meeting solely focused on that.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
How about next Thursday?
I'm not available on next Thursday.
Not me either.
Not either. I am after seven.
I believe the league is next week, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, but doesn't it end?
It ends on Thursday, so.
It will come on Friday.
Right.
Right. Um, Thursday. Okay. How about Friday then? Um.
Friday the seventeen?
I, I don't do Friday meetings.
At Friday night?
That's what.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, let me check my work calendar. I'm going to try to have a meeting.
I got a thing on seventeen.
I'm available on the seventeenth. I can do a twelve o'clock noon meeting during my lunch.
The these hearings are not like an hour long. This is sort of like a trial type of thing. We have to coordinate and get the attorneys in. We have to get witnesses in. It's like a whole.
Could be a few hours.
Correct. Then, so that's.
Can you do those on a Saturday?
Yeah.
I can't do the.
I don't know because I don't know if attorneys are available then.
Right.
To get professionals. Yeah, you need to be available at night.
So I don't think that the Saturday after Thanksgiving. Um, so then could we perhaps look at the twenty eighth, which is a Tuesday?
I can't do Tuesday, but I can do Wednesday, the twenty ninth or Thursday, the twenty, uh, Wednesday, twenty ninth or Thursday, the thirty.
So let's look at the twenty ninth and thirty.
I think the twenty ninth.
Okay, the thirtieth. Can we look at the thirtieth, Councilwoman Castellino?
We also need a quorum. Um, I think I'm good on the thirtieth.
Yeah, Mr. Faith, you have your hand raised?
Uh, Ms. Santana has her hand raised. I think she might.
Santana? You have a question?
No, I was, I was going to address at the end. Um, Councilman Rutherford, can you email me your questions for me, the, for the terminal leave?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. So right now we're looking at the thirtieth. And if Madam Clark, if you can work with the uh professionals and the legal team and see if they're available on the thirtieth, then they'll get back to us.
After six thirty for me.
Okay.
Sorry.
Seven thirty? No.
Is there a seven? Is there an eight?
No.
Okay, that's fine.
Six thirty.
So you can do six thirty or after six?
After.
So six forty-five. I, my daughters has a project that I'm going to uh watch via Zoom.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Seven, should we just do seven?
Yeah, that works.
Yep.
All right. So I will get in touch with, uh, I don't really know. I'll I'll speak to the chief tomorrow.
You have something else, Councilwoman, on the new business?
Uh, yes, a a couple residents reached out to me about the public advocate. We don't have one. Does the administration plan on um, hiring a new public advocate?
Okay, so is that the only question?
Yeah, that's it.
All right. Uh, is that move to adjourn?
Wait.
Oh.
Can someone answer that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, well, I I mean, they're not, can can we?
I can't answer.
Yeah, I was going to say, then I hear.
Word to the mayor and.
Okay, I was just looking sure if you knew anything.
Yep, I have it written down here. Yep.
To adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. Good evening, West Orange. Thank you all so much. Um, and we look forward to seeing you on the twentieth of November at our next council meeting. You have any information, you can email us at council@westorange.org. Have a great evening and thank you for joining us this night.
Good night, West Orange.